Good evening and welcome to the April 27, 2021 work session of the Mayor City Council. This is the second of two nights of work sessions we're doing on the FY22 budget. Tonight, we're going to focus on the capital improvements program and stormwater. And I am handing it over to Tanisha or to Dennis. Who do you want me to hand it off to, Tanisha?
I think Dennis is driving tonight.
Okay, Dennis. Happy to be there. If we could have page three of the packet pulled up, just the cover slide. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, as the mayor indicated, we're going to give you an overview of the capital budget along with the stormwater budget. You can move to the next slide. You can see the agenda. We'll provide an update of the proposed CIP projects for FY21. And then we'll get into the revised FY22/26 CIP budget. And we're going to talk a little bit about the continued focus on maintenance projects. We'll also provide an overview of the projects that were added to the CIP. And then there is a little bit of a discussion about some modifications that we are proposing to the FY22/26 CIP budget as presented tonight. And then Beth will actually go into the stormwater FY20 budget with the operating and the CIP components. Next page.
Dennis, before we move forward, I wanted to, now that you've introduced it, the agenda for the evening, I wanted to open it up and see if there was any public comments before we, before we go through the presentation as we did last night. If there's anybody, I don't recognize all of the names that are, that are here in attendees. If there's anybody who'd like to offer testimony or comments tonight, just use the Zoom raise hand function and I'll call on you. Going once, going twice. Okay, then let's go back to the presentation and get started. Thanks, Dennis.
Sure. So first, we'll provide you an overview of the projects that we have on slate for FY21. The first set of projects I'm going to talk about are the new construction and enhancement projects. Again, these tend to be some of the more visible public projects that we have because they're typically creating either new amenities, new office space, or new parks. So the first one I'll talk about is the Old Town Plaza Park project. As you're aware, there are a number of things that we're reworking on some of the elements related to the plaza water feature. I have to kind of let you guys know there was a supply chain issue with some of the components that are critical to the construction of the water feature. So we've had a slight delay in that project. We had hoped that it would be completed by this summer, but it looks like it's going to be completed at the end of the summer. Construction will begin on May 20th and will end about August 31st. So that's really at the tail end of the summer. I will note that currently, based on the COVID restrictions, water spray parks are not open to the public. And as I go through the projects, if council has questions, feel free to stop me and I'll be able to try to respond to those questions as we go forward. The other major project that we have that's actually under construction at this particular point in time is 16 South Summit Avenue. I think many of you are aware that we've been having difficulties getting utilities to the site. In particular, we've had some design issues and permitting issues related to securing the permanent water. Based upon that, we have had delays in this project. And the delays really are going to impact the key mechanical systems such as the HVAC. In a building of this size, it's really critical that we have climate control so that the finished materials can be installed, such as carpet, millwork, and the furniture. That has not been completed to date yet. We're expecting that to be completed on May 11th, so we'd have water to the site, which ironically is the date that we had originally set for substantial completion. As you can see, the project is several months behind. Under the current schedule, our anticipated completion date for substantial completion of the project would be August 16th. There will be some final elements that need to be done related to the audio visual, especially related to the council chambers. And we're anticipating those to be completed by the end of September. I will also note that the contractor, the project art detect, and all of us are really working on ways to save some time in the schedule so we could reduce the anticipated time related to the delays. So on to more kind of pleasant projects that aren't behind schedule. Pleasant View Park is currently out to bid and the bids are due back on May 5th. Again, Pleasant View Park is also known as Consumer Protection, CPSC, I'm sorry.
Consumer Product Safety Commission.
Thank you, Judd. But recently got renamed by the council to Pleasant View Park. That project again is slated to have the bids come back on May 5th with an anticipated contract award to be in July of this year. It is about a 16-month construction on this project. And so we would anticipate the completion date to be November of 2022. Another park that we have under development is Crown Park. We're taking slightly a different approach with this park, kind of a phased-in approach. We have a number of historic buildings on this site. And so one of the first things we will be doing related to the Crown Park site is the corn crib on the site will undergo full restoration. This project is currently at 95% design stage and it is anticipated that the construction on that portion of the project will begin in the fall of 2021. In terms of the overall park design, staff is currently working on a survey, which will be used to gather feedback on potential uses and amenities. And based upon that survey, we will develop some park plans that we will later go back out to the public for additional feedback. We are currently working with the community manager at Crown to ensure that we have a wide distribution at Crown Development. But we also want to make sure that all the individuals within the community have an opportunity to provide feedback on the survey and also on the plans. And so we will engage the rest of the community also through social media aspects. One of our other large projects is the pedestrian bridge over the Great Seneca Highway. This project, we have selected design professionals and are currently in the process of finalizing the contract details with a consultant. It's anticipated that the preliminary engineering will begin in June. With this project, we're taking a little bit different approach, including some of the new ways that we will be looking at CIP. At the 30% design phase, we'll bring that project back to you. And we will start to look also at the lifecycle costs of the proposed new enhancement with the bridge. Again, this is kind of a new approach so that we have some long-term projections on what it would cost for us to maintain this bridge and also kind of the life cycle of when it would need to be replaced. So the city has a better idea of the commitment it's making when we build large infrastructure projects like this. Next slide. To continue with the new construction and enhancement projects, you all are pretty familiar with the bicycle projects. This is also some of the projects that we've been coming back to you with kind of at 30% design to give you some feedback on whether we should proceed or not, or if we should make modifications to the design. I will say on the bicycle projects, these are all contingent upon receiving funding from the Transportation Development Tax Fund that we are currently in negotiations with Montgomery County on the MOU that administers how those funds are spent. The Quince Orchard portion of the Bicycle Share projects is currently in the topographic survey stage. And that should be completed here this month. In addition, the project will be moving forward with the 30% design with anticipated completion at the end of June. Should the council decide to move forward with this project, it would begin construction sometime late 2022. The most recent project we brought to you was the Washington Boulevard Low Stress Bicycle facility, and that has gone through the 30% design engineering. The mayor and council did approve that project with some revisions and we are moving forward with 60% design. And the projected engineering will go through FY21 and FY22, and then construction would start in the spring of 2022. Some of the other projects we get a lot of questions on are the two synthetic fields. The first one would be Robertson Park. That project is back on track after the original manufacturer of the synthetic field ceased operation. If the council remembers that particular synthetic field, we are looking at a no fill option. Currently, our synthetic field at Lakelands is a filled organic option, which we ended up going back to for the Robertson Park field. And the construction will start in early May on that project and is completed in early August. The second field that we have is related to the school at Kelly Park Construction and is a joint project with Montgomery County Public Schools. It is currently in the RFP process and the smittles are due back for that project on May 5th. Again, just to note to the public and a reminder to the council, this project is actually funded by Montgomery County Public Schools and would be completed with the opening of the new elementary school in the fall of 2022. I'll kind of pause there because the other ones are a little bit different and see if there are any questions from the council.
Dennis, I have a quick question about the Kelly Park field. Will that be built, the same, basically the same vendor or the same infill as our other synthetic fields?
That is what we're proposing. The RFP that went out is for a synthetic field with organic infill material, just like we currently have at the Lakelands and will have at the Robertson Park. This one's a little bit more complicated in the way that the agreement with the school works is they also have to approve it. So they did approve the tentative RFP for that. And then we'll have to bring it back to you and back to Montgomery County Public Schools, but it will be the same. It'll be slightly smaller than our existing fields based upon the space that we have.
Yeah, the biggest concern is basically the infill. So, I mean, we pioneered that in Montgomery County and it would nice, be good to see it maintained, the organic infill.
I had a question, Dennis. Because that's a MCPS school field, who's going to be responsible for the park? I guess for the field maintenance?
We are actually, we will actually own the field. So the portion of land that the field is on, we are required to do the maintenance on the field and do the programming. They do have a relationship with us in terms of a use agreement that allows the school similar to Lakeland's in terms of how they use the field during the school day. And then we get to use it during the non-program school days. So we will actually own it and have to maintain it and do the replacement.
And so are we, so we're sharing the activity schedule with MCPS? Is that only during school time or?
It's only during school time. There are some other additional parameters. There was an agreement that was signed and executed as part of the land transfer agreement, as a partner agreement that spell out the parameters. We do get some additional aspects that we get use of the school after school for after-school programs and things like that. So there is a little bit of trade-off between the school district and the city.
Okay, because I'm thinking about the summertime and wondering if we're competing with the school for summer programs or with our Parks and Resorts Department?
Typically not with the summer programs. It would be mostly sometimes after school, they have programs where we might not be able to program the field, but the initial intent is after school is that we'd be able to program the field.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to Rob.
Thanks. I'm having trouble finding my hand on the screen here. I apologize for all the waving. Two questions. Are we, I was happy you just mentioned lifecycle costs with respect to the bridge. Are we considering the lifecycle costs for the organic infill plastic field? And then second question is, was there a grass field option that was considered as part of that project?
We did not consider a grass field as part of the project, just based on the sheer size that we had to work with and the limited space that it would be difficult to fit that in. In addition, we haven't been successful with grass fields and the amount of play that it would need to get during the school day and after school. We already have some issues with the amount of play our synthetic fields get with these shared use facilities. At Lakeland's, we've had some higher usage than we were ready for and had some maintenance that we had to do on that project a little bit early. So we have not considered a non-synthetic field for that site. We did not do a lifecycle cost for this particular project because it was a commitment that the city was making with the school district. We will try to work that in as we work through the project, but that was not something done ahead of time.
Okay, and I'm sorry, one more question. I know I had, so I had two. I guess this would also apply to the Lakeland's Park. Under our shared use agreements, considering that the schools are using it over time, you know, children's will be causing wear and tear to the fields. Do they contribute at all to maintenance costs, both for this field as well as Lakeland's Park schools? I'm sorry, the field?
Under the agreement, they do not contribute to the maintenance of the fields. We do have the option under the Kelly Park to request some additional maintenance. That's a little bit broader in scope in terms of the agreement. I think as we look to revise the Lakeland's agreement, we'll do similar items. We have talked to them because they have a number of synthetic fields that also use organic infill. I'm trying to do some joint purchase of the organic infill to save some costs on our end, so.
We'll go to Neil.
So Dennis, I'd just like to point out and confirm a number of the projects that you've shown us are funded externally, not out of our normal funding budget. And that would include basically all the bicycle projects that are in the CIP, including the two that you're pointing to here, the Kelly Park Synthetic Field and the Proposed Pedestrian Bridge. That's, is that correct?
Correct. Those all have associated funding. Again, the bicycle projects, there are more than the two I mentioned are all programmed to be funded out of the Transportation Development Tax. And then the, the bridge was a joint partnership with Astra Zenica.
Okay, and the reason I bring it up is that as we go through the evening, I'm sure we'll be discussing the fact that our CIP budget is, as we go forward, is probably not sustainable at the current rate. But these projects are not, are separately funded and the only real concern is what the maintenance cost would be to us ongoing, not the actual construction cost.
In most cases, the bridge, we hope that the budget that we have been allocated through the partnership with Astra Zenica would be sufficient. We did secure additional funding through the state with the bond bill initiative of 250,000 for that particular project. Some of the park projects also have POS or public open space money or bond initiatives associated with them also.
All right. The Robertson Park field had project open space.
It is all project open space online.
All right, so as you go through these, please make sure that you identify any external funding sources, just to, just so we're clear, where, where we need to come up with the money and where somebody else is coming up with it.
And I will have a little bit of discussion how we're moving away from some of the one-time projects or kind of the new amenity projects and moving into a phase of more restoration repair type projects as we go through the presentation.
Council members, just want to remind everybody when, when Dennis goes into share screen mode, I can't see, I can't see everybody. So if you have questions, just jump in there, okay? All right, go ahead, Dennis.
If there's nothing else, then we can go back to the presentation and we'll talk a little bit about the IT projects and the art projects. So next slide. Oops, sorry, go back one. Too quick of my eyes. So there are a couple of IT projects. One in particular, I wanted to provide you an update. Although this is kind of a new infrastructure project, it will be something that most people won't know exists, but it's going to be critical for us moving forward. The IT fiber ducting project, as we call it, will actually connect City Hall, 16 South Summit, the parking garage and the pavilion outside of City Hall. It is currently out to bid. Those bids are due back May 7th. We're expecting that the construction of that project will be completed roughly about the same time as the police station project. That will allow us some greater flexibility within our IT system. We're currently operating through a lot of wireless facilities in those locations. There's one art project I wanted to talk about tonight, which was the Trail Marker Project. There will be a call for artists released this summer, seeking artists with experience working with youth. And the first iteration, this is a multi-year project, will occur in FY22 in conjunction with the city's youth centers and with G-Parks Explore Gaithersburg Trail Mapping Initiative. So that's kind of the new construction enhancement projects. Next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the repair and restoration projects. So I kind of lumped the first group of projects altogether, which we do have a number of annual projects, which include the sidewalk replacement, road maintenance, street resurfacing, and culvert maintenance. This year, again, for the road maintenance portions, we do use the pavement management index system or to determine which streets we're actually going to work into those programs. And so this year, it actually kind of turned out, and you can see there's a correlation to when the street gets built and when we need to do preventative maintenance. The focus was on two areas. One was the West Riding Neighborhood. And then the other one was the Commons Area, which most people don't know that neighborhood well-defined, but it's really kind of just on the other side of the Walnut Hill Shopping Center. There's a little bit of Gaithersburg there along with the county. The other street project that we did that we consider kind of repair and restoration is also related to kind of our energy conservation goals, which was the LED street light conversion. This is a multi-year project too that would end in 2025. We did phase one this year. We focused mainly on the roadway lighting, which was chosen as the priority for convenience of added safety benefits as well as ensuring kind of a clean look as we go through this program. We wanted to try to make sure we're doing it in a fluid and organized manner. With the phase one projects, we replaced 802 Cobra Head High Pressure Sodium Fixtures and 141 Colonial High Pressure Sodium Fixtures. The curb installation on Main Street is really an installation project to prevent people from driving onto one of the areas that we have difficulty with in terms of maintaining the ponds over there. That work was actually started this week and it will be completed by the first week in May. Next slide. The tennis court and basketball court resurfacing, we do a number of these each year. The current ones that we picked for FY21 were a little bit more deteriorated than we expected. So staff is currently revising the scope of work. And then we'll go back out to bid for that. We probably will use some contingency funds to make up the additional expenses related to the new scope of work. Some visible projects that we still consider repair, restoration projects are the signal reconstructions. Two of those have been occurring in FY21. The Russell Avenue and Odenhall project is basically 95% complete. It's operational. There are some minor tweaks that need to happen with pavement striping and a little bit of grass repair. The Brooks and Summit Avenue, we're actually waiting on Pepco to move ahead with the connection on that particular project. It is hoped that we will have those finished by the end of June. Again, this is a kind of an ongoing project that we have. We have a number of other signals that we are required to maintain and we have developed a strategy that goes out to 2026 for those replacements. And then the one that most people won't see ever, but will have a great impact in terms of whether it operates or not, is the Water Park Filtration Pump and Motor Replacement Project. That's, here's a picture of the, the new equipment being installed this year. It was started last year in December and will be completed on May 11th. This will allow the pool to open on time for the upcoming season. Just to give you a perspective of kind of how long-range some of these projects can be, but we need to make sure that we're putting money aside and planning for them. This original equipment minus the UV system was installed in 1995. The UV system was installed in 2009. And so although it seems like a one-time project, it is actually an ongoing expense. It's just over the longer haul when we look at some of these larger facilities. One of the other projects that I think people will take notice if they use the Kentland's Mansion for a reservation or when they do a wedding reception, or we did renovate the two bathrooms on the second floor. The tubs were removed. We provided a little bit more space to fit more in line with what uses are being used in the mansion. We upgraded the electrical fire modifications and then did a number of cosmetic features. That was completed in 2021. Next slide. Kind of pause here for a moment to see if anybody had any questions about those restoration renovation projects.
Any questions? Not seeing any. Go right ahead, Dennis.
There were, if we can go back to the presentation, there were a number of projects that didn't get completed in FY21 as we anticipated. A number of those projects were moved either based upon staffing issues. Some were actually related to COVID or change in priorities. Those are listed here. Some of the bigger ones are focused around City Hall and the build out of 16 South Summit. As we decide how we're going to go back to work, that's one of the reasons we kind of did a pause on that facility. One of the ones that we did cancel was the vehicle wash system at Public Works. We feel like we can deal with that in other ways at this particular time. Before we kind of move on to the FY22 projects, I wanted to give you an idea that we also have the asset replacement fund that does contain some CIP projects. Typically, most people associate the asset replacement with kind of vehicle replacement, but there are building components that we do use and park components that we do have in our system that we do, we use this asset replacement fund to structure the projects around. A couple of examples would be for this year, the lighting in the Arts Barn is being redone. It actually just came at the right opportune moment because the arts facility is closed because of COVID. So we went ahead and moved forward with that project. It is being funded out of the asset replacement fund and not the CIP fund. We'll be doing something similar in FY22 when we look at a complete replacement of the audio visual components at the Old Town Youth Center. Again, that has kind of a recording studio and a number of other components that were originally designed with that facility. As I mentioned before, the city has developed a replacement program for our existing play structures throughout the city and that's funded through the asset replacement. And some, a lot of times, as Neil pointed out, some of those projects are also funded with POS or other park funding. We didn't do any projects in FY21. We did complete two projects in FY20, which was Travis Park and Diamond Farms Park. And in FY22, DePaul Park is on the schedule to receive new playground. Next slide.
I have a question for you, Dennis. I know we're not diving into the weeds on these yet, but looking at the, at the budget book for the asset replacement accounts, there is over $11 million in that account and it stays pretty flat. Bounces around between 11 and 12 over the next five years. But the expenses that come out of that account are only in the $2 million, $2.5 million a year range. So is there a reason why we're keeping so much of our, of our cash in that reserve account?
Tanish may want to help me answer this because we talk about this a lot. So I think the city learned some lessons in 2010 when they did not put away enough funding, especially for vehicle and other equipment replacement related to public works. So the asset fund was created because we are a pay-as-you-go city to make sure that we're putting enough aside as assets come up. I think we will have years because of the way we purchased our vehicles, where we have a lot of expenditures that will come up in future years. And we're just trying to make sure that there's adequate funding for those. So we would say it's adequately funded and in some cases we may be actually underfunding it based on the number of assets that are supposed to be replaced by that fund.
Yeah, I think I know that I don't want to give you a lot of extra work to do, but I'm going to suggest one anyway, that that instead of looking at this kind of asset replacement and any in general maintenance projects over a five-year period, you've got to look at a much longer time period because some of these, some of these assets might be ten, ten or twenty years worth and then need replacing. That's the only way you can understand how much, how much money you need in these funds. And I say this with experience of doing exactly the sort of thing, both in business and for the for the HOA that I used to be part of.
Yes, so the asset replacement fund is not based on a five-year schedule. It's based upon the age that we believe the asset lifespan is. So a police vehicle, I believe, and don't, don't quote me on this, I believe is seven years or ninety-five thousand miles or ninety thousand miles. So each asset has a different lifespan and we do calculate into that how much we're putting aside each year to achieve the ultimate goal. I think one of the hard parts of the asset replacement fund is when you are looking, as you pointed out, Neil, that this fund looks in some cases ten years, fifteen years out, is are you putting away enough based upon what the new purchase price would be? I think we're finding that for some of the components, we have not put away enough, especially for some of the larger truck components. They are costing more than we actually put away in the fund for that particular vehicle. It is very itemized schedule. It is based on each vehicle and each asset that we have in that fund.
Yeah, thanks for that, Dennis. I will, I would only add that the asset replacement fund is a part of the package of of in of deep review that we're going to undertake over the next fiscal year. So we are, you know, I think Dennis pointed out all the things that, you know, we paid a lot of attention to budget cycle, which is, you know, looking at some of those assets that maybe hadn't been valued or surprisingly, you know, prices escalated unexpectedly, that sort of thing. So we are trying to determine what something will cost fifteen years from now, if that's the asset's useful life. And in some cases, we're able to save more money because we're able to extend beyond the useful life. So all of that has to get factored in.
All right, so what you're saying is you don't want to do that deep dive right now, which is great.
Well, we don't have that with you. We could certainly share, it's a very detailed spreadsheet that has every asset, its useful life, a formula that accompanies it and how much dollars goes toward each asset each year. As I looked at it, you know, I thought that there was some opportunities for improvement, but I will tell you, as I came to the city, I was excited that 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 work, that initial work in Heavy Lift had already been completed. That is a critical piece of remaining a pay-as-you-go community is anticipating those costs in fifteen, twenty years out and putting away the little bit of money we need to each year to be ready to make that purchase when it comes versus coming up with the dollars in that year.
No, and I completely appreciate that. I just, on the other side of the coin, want to make sure that we're not putting away so much money that we run out for other things that we want to do.
Well, it's a good point, but I think, you know, we, we have to make sure we are reinvesting appropriately in our existing assets. And and that may mean sacrificing new things that we want to build or do because we need to, you know, we need to take care of the money that we've already invested. We need to, you know, make sure those assets are maintained appropriately.
Oh, and I, I wouldn't argue with any of that. I think that's exactly what we should be looking at. But somewhere, somewhere between having lots of extra money to buy lots of new things and running out of money, as the chart last year, last night showed us, is I think a much happier place to be. And I, and I think one possible place is that we want to take a good hard look at this. And I'm not going to beat this to death any longer, but the.
Well, I, I think you've made the point and and I, I just, I want to go to Rob because he's raising his hand and then I see Mike's got an raise too.
I still have fifteen minutes left on the clock, though. No, it's okay. I yield the floor.
I, I, I understand the question you're asking, Neil. I just don't, I, I'm not with you on this one. I think we need to focus very carefully on the life, the useful life of our assets and accrue for those replacements. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. I thank the right honorable gentleman for yielding. Just quick question. So when we dispose of assets and we have, assuming we have any recoveries from the sale of those assets, do those go back into the asset placement fund or are they going to the general fund? Again, assuming we get anything.
I am almost certain they go to the general fund, but we didn't invite Janice to tonight's party. So we can't confirm it, but I believe it goes to the general fund.
Typically, Rob, any revenue goes to the general fund and then gets reallocated to the other funds.
All right, Mike.
So last night, this is related to assets. Last night, we, we learned that we're about ready to assume responsibility or ownership of streets in Crown, in the Crown Farm. I'm just curious whether that's going to result in obtaining new assets for that or are we going, or do we have the the resources now to take care of those streets? But, you know, in doing so, that could actually reduce the, the life of some of that equipment. So just curious what, how we're approaching that. This won't be the only community where this will happen, though.
As we build new communities, we always take on new assets. Those can be far ranging from a simple stop sign to a street sign, to the actual road itself, to the stormwater facility that runs along the roadway. Those all become assets within the system and have to be incorporated in terms of how we do maintenance. I think one of the strides that we have done in the last few years, we've gotten a lot better at record keeping. When we bring these assets online, there was a discussion last night too, that, you know, from a certain standpoint, the developer and often the residents who move into a neighborhood want us to take on those assets sooner than we really should from the lifespan standpoint, right? We want to make sure that the assets are in the best condition, A1 new, when we get them. And so that's one of the quandaries that we have. But Mike, we don't have a calculated system for that. I think with the payment management index, we will add those to the street processing. And so we will start to do better record keeping of what the conditions are and try to hit those streets sooner than later. That's kind of a newer philosophy that we have with street maintenance. So I think over the long haul, even though we're taking on new assets, we'll be taking better care of them with the system that we have set up.
Okay, but I guess the question was, do we have the assets to to manage those streets that we're going to take over?
Again, initially with streets, there isn't a high cost at the very beginning. The cost comes in year fifteen through twenty if we don't do preventative maintenance. I mean, I think we will have to reevaluate the number that we do for maintenance on streets. If you remember, I think it was two years ago, maybe it's been three now. We came to the council and said, okay, based upon the pavement management index, we need X dollars in the CIP fund. And even in my presentation, I'll note, when we talk a little bit later on, we spend over two million dollars on streets, just on streets through the preventative maintenance program or, and that doesn't include rebuilds such as Quinsorjic Boulevard, that's kind of a different program. So do we have the assets? We will have to make sure that we do. That may mean doing less kind of one-time projects or new amenity projects, you know, that comes with that. The other aspect, I would say, that with new development, we also bring in additional revenue range. So with new neighborhoods, we do bring in additional revenue based upon income tax and property tax. And so hopefully those will offset some of those costs along with other services that we're providing the residents.
Okay, thanks.
Think that's it, is that it?
Yeah, go right ahead, Dennis.
Why don't we start with the presentation again? The next couple of slides that we have, it's getting to kind of Neil's point to a little bit, is if you look at the expenditures that we currently have when you divide them between new construction enhancement, which I view as one-time costs versus repair and restoration, which were kind of annual costs, you can see that the dollar values that we're spending on those particular CIP projects are changing pretty drastically, even over the next four-year period. So for instance, this year, we're spending about seventy-seven percent on new construction. Again, a big driver of that is the police station and some of the park projects. In twenty twenty-two, that starts to be a fifty-fifty split. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll see in twenty twenty-three, it changes to a little bit less than a fifty-fifty split. And by twenty twenty-four, you're actually going to see almost a reversal of what we saw in FY twenty-one, when we're spending most of the CIP funds on repair and restoration. We believe that will continue as a trend. And especially when we start looking at the lifecycle costs of our facilities, we have started to do that already to some extent. Twenty twenty-two is going to be the year we kind of get this all packaged together. If you've seen the CIP, the last few years, we've had a facility need study for most of our major buildings. The last one that will be completed this year, with the exception of kind of the seniors, the Benjamin Gaither Center is KC Community Center. And with that information, we'll better predict kind of what the repair and restoration is going to be for the city, for all of our facilities. So we have been kind of gearing up for this to happen in a cycle and it's just that it's happening in FY twenty-two when we will be able to do that detailed analysis of kind of the lifecycle components of each of those structures. I will note that one of the things too, when we look at this, as I noted before, that we'll try to start doing this on an ongoing basis for projects too, especially the one-time new construction enhancement projects that when we come forward, as I noted before, the pedestrian bridge, we will actually come with the lifecycle cost at the thirty percent design level. And as we move through the design process, we'll come back to you with kind of lifecycle costs. So the council and the community can have a better understanding of what the commitment is to build that asset. And in some cases, you know, I'm not saying it's the case of the bridge, but we might choose not to run that asset or do that asset. The last time the city did that would have been with the indoor aquatic facility that was proposed off of Route twenty-eight. That was a project that was slated to be constructed. But in around twenty-ten, I don't know the exact year, the city chose not to move forward with that particular facility for a number of reasons, including the lifecycle costs and the operational costs of that facility. So next slide, we'll move into the FY twenty-two proposed budget. I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about where the funding is coming from. Each year, there are transfers from the general fund and use of existing CIP funds. And when I talk about transferring from the general fund, as I noted before, everything that comes in as income comes to the general fund. So if we do have POS money or a bond initiative approved by the state or if there were transportation development tax funding coming in, that would still come through the general fund. But we do note that in each of the project pages, it will say that it's either, you know, a county revenue source, a state revenue source or a miscellaneous source. And then in the project descriptions, we know what the source is and if there are any requirements to that. Some of the POS money has requirements, along with the bond bill initiatives have requirements with them. So for this year, we actually held the transfer from the general fund to five million dollars. And one of the reasons we did that, it wasn't just a number that was picked out of the air, is that over the long haul, since I've been here, we have been tracking kind of the, the one-time or the enhancement projects, new construction projects versus the restoration and repair projects. And it roughly works out to be about five to six million a year that we need just for the repair and restoration projects. And so the other sources of funding this year had to be made up through other ways. Because if you looked at the previous budget that was introduced with the ordinance, it was actually eight million was supposed to be the transfer from the general fund. We reduced that three million by getting the stormwater transfer, but we also transferred a number of funds within the existing CIP. Moving forward, that's going to be more of a case. We do have some fund balances in each of the CIP funds and we will be looking towards kind of reallocation of those funds to help with the operating side, thus reducing the transfer that's required under the general fund aspect. Because the three point five million coming from store owner was just a one-time deal for us. Next slide. So given that in mind, the FY twenty-two CIP does show a twenty-two million dollar expenditure during the fiscal year. In terms of new projects, you'll see that the new projects that we actually added are really repair and restoration projects. We didn't really add any enhancement projects per se. Those projects add up to one point nine million. Again, some of those are spread out for more than one year. They're listed here. There is a replacement of the KC Community Center Pedestrian Bridge. We will do some waterproofing at City Hall. The Mini Goth Pond Repair, which is the photograph here, is due for a liner replacement and we're going to take a new approach to that to try and increase the lifecycle of that particular project. One of the other projects that we're, we're slating to do in twenty-three is look at the manor house roof replacement. And again, this is the property that we had purchased back when Bora Park was purchased. But there was a living estate for that up until about five years ago, where the individuals we purchased the farmland from were allowed to live in the house. They are no longer living in the house and we'll have to decide what will happen to that particular asset. We don't currently have any plans for that asset and it's really, if you think about it, it's more than one asset because there's actually the manor house. There's the servants quarters or the servants' house. And then there's also the barn structure that's behind it. And we're hoping to develop at least some concept of how we might think about the lifecycle of those properties. One of the other projects I wanted to point out that we're trying to do is the park path repair and overlay. This is similar to some of our annual projects, but it's going to be more of a focused kind of three-year or three-year event, hopefully. We would be spending funding in FY twenty-three through FY twenty-six and we'll do it similar to the pavement management index. It just won't be done electronically. We'll do a survey, a visual survey and do repair of those facilities within our parks. So next slide. The two other components, I thought I'd kind of brief you on in the FY twenty-two, twenty-six projects are the technology enhancements. I wanted to spend a little bit of time on this because we will take a deeper dive into how these projects are being funded as we look at the analysis we're going to do on the lifecycle with the CIP. You'll note that really we are doing a number of kind of new software initiatives, but in reality, they're not new software initiatives anymore. Again, most of these are cloud initiatives and the money that we have put aside for the enhancements really are migration to a new system. So they're really consulting time. They're not actually purchasing a hard copy of this because they're almost all subscription-based to some degree, especially the GIS software, Microsoft three sixty-five, which was talked about. And then that cloud data governance are all kind of in those category along with the meeting management system. You know, this is a, a monthly fee or an annual fee that we pay to a provider to provide those. And really what is being combined in the CIP tech is the actual migration to the new system. And then we did add one project with the refocus of some of the downtown projects related to public art, and that was the creation of the Community Murals Project Program. Does anybody have any questions about the projects I just talked about? The next kind of phase is talking about some options that staff would like to present to the council regarding two projects. One, which is currently in the CIP. one which is currently in the CIP and one which is not.
Did I see your end?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dennis, for the overview. I had a question about restoration projects. Do we have any restoration projects coming up in the next fiscal year?
Well, I kind of lump all of those into restoration because it's always that weird fine line of what's repair and restoration. If you're talking about pure restoration projects, about the only one that we have is the crib at Crown Farm, which is going to restore that project to kind of a historic period. The rest are more kind of repair and restoration projects. So I kind of love, for example, the Kentland's mansion bathroom. It wasn't just repair. It was kind of a restoration and, you know, changes to it. But it's not a new project or a new asset. It's just maintaining that existing asset.
Okay, and what's the completion time on the Blum Park restoration project? What else are we waiting for to complete it?
In terms of the stormwater project, I'll have Beth answer that. She'll be more equipped to answer that. She can either do that now if she wants to, or she can do it as part of her presentation. So if we go back to the presentation, the two projects I wanted to talk about is we currently have a replacement for Inspiration Dock there at Inspiration Lake. If you remember, you can see at the kind of the top of the screen to the left was where the existing pier was removed, and that's where the dock was along that embankment. We cannot put it back there. That's actually a dam. How it got constructed in that location is unknown to me and unknown to most of the staff that is currently here at Gaithersburg. We had looked at a number of options, and we had proposed installing a floating dock. You can see that down at the the lower left. Initially, when we started this project based upon what we thought we were getting into, we thought we'd be in the hundred thousand dollar range for this project. We have run into some securing issues with the actual floating dock. It's very hard to find anyone to do that who will do it as a reasonable cost. In addition, once we moved the dock, we would have to make it ADA compliant to the dock. And so the project costs escalated to roughly three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And so what we're proposing at the staff level is to eliminate this project. The dock has been non-operational for over a year, almost two years, I believe. Now granted, some of that was during COVID. We haven't heard a lot of opposition to where is it or when are you putting it back? We just don't believe that this is a good project from a lifecycle cost standpoint to put back. And we would propose using some of that funds along with some additional funds to do the next project. So I can get the next slide. So as was pointed out, we are doing some restroom restoration at Blum Park. With these projects, we have always had the concept of trying to do some enhancement project related to our stormwater facility. So if we're building a new stormwater actual pond, or if we're doing the stream restorations where it's feasible, we would like to try to develop a program. And again, this is all dependent upon funding, some type of enhancement that comes or at least restoration of what was there. Because in this case, Blum Park did have some trail improvements around it and a number of bridges. What we are proposing is to take some of the funding from the Inspiration Dock project, apply it to this conceptual plan for Blum Park improvements. It's really two components. We did look at trying to make a loop trail, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But there would be one trail extension that would dead-end at kind of the the stream bed. And then there would actually be off of the existing kind of loop there by Watkins Mill would be another loop that would actually have some boardwalk installations that would go into the floodplain that we would use as an educational tool to help people understand why it's important to reconnect the streams with the floodway. We did look at trying to make that connection, as I noted earlier. But as you can see, that crosses two streams, and the bridges are expensive. And so I, we are not proposing at that time to create that loop. Staff did explore that. The cost that we have tentatively sketched out just for the items that are shown in red, not dotted red, and then the two boardwalks, which are kind of that off yellow-orange color, are somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand. If we actually did the bridge components, completed that link, the cost would go up to about a one point five million. Because the bridges are really driving that component. We felt that the two amenities with the trails would be sufficient and would look towards putting that into the CIP when it comes back to you for adoption. In terms of timeline, we would be looking at trying to do the design in FY twenty-two and construction in FY twenty-three. Some of those components we may do in-house because we're looking at trying to do more natural trail improvements through mulch and other items rather than asphalt paving in those locations. Some of the additional funding, you know, I talked about the three hundred and fifteen thousand. We are looking at using some POS money for this project also, which is public open space funding, along with some additional funding that's already in the CIP Park future projects plan. So I wanted to get a little feedback on that, if we should include those, delete the one project and include the new Blum Park improvements in the proposal that comes back to you for adoption in June.
Council members, just jump in. Rob, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot you couldn't see. Can I ask a question about the dock? Is it, is it, it's not recreational, is it? We keep, it wasn't utilized for people to go boating on Inspiration Lake?
No, it was mainly used to sit on. In theory, we didn't encourage fishing or anything like that. You know, but we do have fishing that happens in a number of our ponds.
Does it have any maintenance? And if so, or can we perform maintenance?
We don't need it for maintenance. It would have been a pure recreational facility based upon how it was going to be reconstructed in a new location. I think the old dock did serve some maintenance facility, and that may be how it got constructed in the first place, but we're still unclear.
And then on the Blum Park, the the bridge portion, you know, doing the math, it seems like that would be about six hundred thousand dollar add. Is that?
There are two bridges and the pavement in between them. So it's not just one bridge. It would actually need the construction of two bridges to make the full loop.
Okay, because as I recall from our walk prior to the construction, there was at least one bridge that was there and functional.
There is, and we are exploring trying to maintain that bridge. But again, most of the bridges that were constructed were not built to any standard and would not probably be approved today based upon how far you have to be from the the embankments have to be from the stream bed.
And then the dotted line connecting the loop, what is that?
That was just an additional trail where the two bridges are at the end. If we don't connect, construct the two bridges, we would not build the dotted trail that are connecting the loop.
Okay, I mean, for my, I think a path to nowhere is optimal. A loop is optimal, but of course, cost is a concern.
Rob, Rob, can you say that again? Just speak a little louder?
All right, did I chop out or?
It was just soft.
All right, I would think that, in my opinion, a loop is is better than a path to nowhere. But of course, cost is a concern. So I would like to explore it more and see a little bit more of the numbers and the options that were considered by staff. But on the dock, I'm, I'm, you know, I think a cost savings for a structure that's simply used for people to sit on over water, I think that's smart.
Okay, we'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a similar question about the funding. I know you said that there was an alternative to do a paved trail or just a natural trail. Was there a cost comparison available for what that would be?
We have done some analysis on that. I don't have that number right in front of me. But again, part of it has to do with trying to look at the long-term costs of a paved trail over a natural trail, but also looking at the environmental impacts that we would need to do to actually get a paver in there and pave it. So we are trying to look towards a more naturalistic setting. And if we can accomplish that, we would probably move in that direction because it's easier for us to maintain long-term and is not quite as high of an asset replacement in the future.
And you said that we would have to have two bridges if we did go forward with creating the bridges to make?
There would be an option. So, Judd, if you or tech team, if you pull up the slide again, I can kind of walk you guys through it. So if we're talking at, starting at the upper right-hand corner and using that trail following it along, when you get down to that connection point at the very far-left end, you can see there, we kind of show that as a bridge. That is an existing bridge, but we're not sure we're going to be able to replace it or maintain it based upon its condition and how it was constructed. So we would need to construct in order to create the loop, which is the dotted section. We would need to construct a bridge at that end of the loop. And at the other end of the loop, you can see the stream bed kind of comes down again and then merges with the larger stream bed, right?
I'm not following where.
So in the middle, if you can see the two kind of orange dots.
Yeah.
So right below that orange dot, there's a, there's a stream that there would need to be another bridge to connect it to this upper loop. Because again, if you've been out on the site, this loop that does go around is up on a higher elevation than the rest of the area. So we would look to keep the bridge, and then we might be able to construct a little bit of portion of the dotted trail, but not fully connect it back to the one that's already looping around the larger circle that's existing today.
So let me just interrupt for a second. I'll go back to you, Loriann. Dennis, is the main question here, what, the main guidance you're looking for from the council, isn't, i- is it just whether to reallocate some of the funding that would have gone to the dock into this project? And then we'll figure out exactly what this project, the project options will be? Or are you looking for specific guidance as to what this project would end up being?
I just want to, you know, we're not looking for specific guidance on what the project would be at this point. I just want to provide a little context. So what we're going to come back with would be a plan to spend roughly between sixty and eight hundred thousand. I just want to set the expectation that we did explore that loop, and we can still explore that loop, and then we would have to find the funding gap, right? If council wants us to do that portion. But the budget I would bring back to you would eliminate the dock project at three hundred and fifteen and then create this other new Blum Park improvements at roughly eight hundred thousand. And that would be the limit, and then we would see what we could do based upon that.
All right, so the main policy question is whether or not to reallocate from the one to the other?
And to create the new project.
Right, yeah, okay.
Definitely supportive of this.
Okay. I saw Ryan's end first, and then we'll go to Mike. So go ahead, Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm supportive as well. I think it makes sense, and I agree, it doesn't make sense to spend all that money for the dock project when it's not really a strong need, and there hasn't been an uproar from the community about it. I did just want to kind of underscore the point from Dennis's comments, as I understand them, that the amount of money currently in the CIP for the dock replacement is about three hundred and fifteen thousand, right? The amount of the Blum Park proposed project is going to be presumably somewhere between six and eight hundred thousand. So even with the transfer of those funds and the removal of the dock replacement project from the CIP, we're still going to need to look for an additional three to five hundred thousand, even to do the version that doesn't connect the dots on Blum Park. I just want everybody to bear that in mind. But having said that, I, I think this makes sense.
Nick, Ryan, we'll go to Mike.
Yeah, I think I'm in the kind of the same place. I think certainly you begin some study on what the, what the trail would be once we decide, I guess, before we decide on how much to spend, I think we should figure out what kind of trail we need. I, I think it would be kind of ironic that we're, you know, that we've spent a lot of money on a stormwater management project, and we would think about putting an asphalt trail here. That doesn't seem to make sense. I think we should look for some more natural alternatives to a paved trail to kind of, I guess it would bring, actually bring the public closer to the whole natural setting as well. I, it's a lot of money for, I, I guess the other part of this is figuring out what, what the bridges would actually cost and how that would change what we've been doing, what we've been working on at this site in the first place in terms of stormwater management. So, you know, it's my understanding that, that the city never actually built that bridge. It was part of some Eagle Scout project or something like that. So anyway, yeah, but I, I think redirecting the funds from the dock, which seems very limited utility and benefit to the public to, to this project, makes a lot more sense.
And I agree, and I, I don't see any more hands up. So go right ahead, Dennis.
Actually, it'll turn over to Beth now, and she'll start the stormwater fund.
Beth, you are muted.
We're on packet page seventeen. The Stormwater Program has been in work sessions with you a couple of times this year already. So you probably have a good idea of what we've been doing. A short overview, we identified a rate structure for FY twenty-two and beyond for the Stormwater Program Fund. We decided what to do with the cash on hand and how to deal with it. We made a decision that we would be taking over HOA facilities and condominium association facilities if they'd like to have the city take them over. And we've updated the budget items based on the work session outcomes. Next packet page. So the Stormwater Program Operations Account. We have six staff, so the salaries and benefits from those people. We do inspections. All the stormwater facilities in the city need to be inspected once every three years. We do a lot of outreach on, under the operations budget. Repairs and some drainage complaints are non-CIP projects that are handled under operations. We run the illicit discharge program. A picture on the right is a pile of salt that was found on a parking lot in the city. So we think it might have been the reason for the high chloride levels in Lake Verona earlier this spring. The PW's property has an industrial permit to monitor the, any hazardous releases on the site. Everybody in the state is going to get a new industrial permit this year. So we've been working on that. We do our MS four permit reporting, and the part I left off was all the development reviews. So we review the city projects and the development projects. Next page. So this is a graph.
For a second, I'm sorry, Beth. Could you, could you repeat what you went over very quickly about the, the chlorine levels in Lake Verona? Because I know that's come up. What was the reason for that?
We don't know for sure, but after those were reported to us, somebody in operations found this pile of salt in a, in a parking lot on a commercial property in the city upstream from Lake Verona.
Is that what this picture is?
That's what that picture is.
Okay, and do we know where that pile of salt came from?
Well, they should have had a tarp over it. They were using it on their site over the winter.
Okay, so this is hopefully a one-time issue that is not going to recur.
Well, that's part of the illicit discharge program is that we look for places where Well, that's part of the illicit discharge program is that we look for places where illicit discharge like this salt that wasn't maintained properly should have had a tarp over it.
Okay, just wanted to check and make sure I understood where that came from. Thank you.
Okay, so packet page nineteen. This is a graph showing the direct costs of our operations budget. We're moving closer to an enterprise fund. Maybe Tanisha can tell us whether we really are. I'm not an accountant, so I don't know, but so we've decided to use money from the Stormwater Fund to pay for things like the street sweeper and other things that are, that we get MS four credits for or that operations does in support of stormwater. So that's the end of my operations slides. Any questions on operations?
Not seeing any. Go right ahead, Beth.
Cool. Packet page twenty. So the capital program, we moved a lot of projects that were on private property into the out years. We weren't sure what the council was going to say about taking over the HOA facilities. So we've moved the costs out and we've escalated the costs. And we plan to start looking for MS four credits that are available in repair projects. Next slide. So this year, most of our capital project money has been with the Watkins Mill Travis Stream Restoration Project. It should be planted tomorrow. All the grading was finished last week, last month. So the state has asked that we keep the park closed until all the grasses are well-established. So I'm not sure exactly when we'll be able to take down the orange fence and open the park again. Other items we've been working on this year with high cost is the Victory Farm Pond retrofit and the Solitaire Stream Restoration. We had a stream walk at Solitaire. It's over by Brown Station Elementary School. It was well attended on Saturday. Mike Sussman came. Thank you, Mike. We need one more permit to, before we start advertising for a contractor to build that project. Next slide. So next year in FY twenty-two, we expect the bulk of our capital project money to go towards the Solitaire Stream Restoration Project. And on the left is some of the, the exposed banks that are eroding. And on the right is a picture of a similar project that has already been completed. We've also been starting working on some dam safety improvement projects. The most expensive of which is Lake Hurston, and that's going to be a little different than what's in the CIP budget book because we got some estimates from the, the, from an AE to look at like exactly what needs to be done at the dam. We also hope to start the headwaters drainage study. Next slide. Also in FY twenty-two, we expect to begin the easement and covenant process with any HOAs or condominium associations that would like their facility taken over by the city. We have a staff member added in FY twenty-three to help out with the, the extra work for that and the pipe replacement program. But I think we should be able to start with easement and covenants next year. We've also been working on some in-house design on drainage issue problems. This picture is from Woodland Drive and the CSX tracks have, there's a culvert underneath the railroad tracks that's leading to a lot of erosion out there. So that's one of the ones we have in our capital program for in-house design. Any questions on our capital program?
Not seeing any, Beth.
Cool. So we have a, a third account for thirty-three sixty-one. And a lot of the money in that account pays for our outreach. We have, we've been really busy with Green Month over the past month. Some of the funds for the Stormbrain Art Project that G Parks ran came from the Stormwater Fund. We're also active with the Environmental Affairs Committee. A lot of the money that, a lot of the outreach goes, comes through the Chesapeake Bay Trust grants that the city funds. And this year, the Isaac Walton League is doing a salt watch, which I think is where the people got their, their chloride meters from to tell us about Lake Verona.
I think we're on the next slide. You need to change your slide.
I'm, oh, twenty-four, sorry. Asbury Methodist Village is doing outreach on their stream restoration project that they did on their site. The Interfaith Partners for the Chesapeake and the UMD of Sustainable Maryland both got renewed grants for doing outreach. Next slide. For FY twenty-two, we've asked for additional money in the Chesapeake Bay Grant funds because we would like to see some of the nonprofits start doing restoration profit projects too. So those get to be more expensive with, than the outreach. So that's why we've asked for additional funding. That's all I have.
Beth, what's that photo show?
That shows where this nonprofit might want to put a rain garden to catch the water coming off the roof. So since, since we've had this grant program, most of the grants have gone to outreach programs. We haven't been able to really convince anyone to do a restoration project. And the restoration project is going to be a little bit more expensive. I guess we have had a couple of restoration projects nominated. One was a green roof early on. Another one came in last year, but they're not really quite as well-developed as we'd like to see them. So we would like to, to have more money available that we can get some more interesting restoration projects on nonprofits in the city.
With that, Judd, we'll move to the next slide. And we, Beth and I and Tony just want to make sure that you, you guys all know that we're up here talking to you, right? But there are lots of people behind the scenes who are really doing the work on the CIP projects. And here's a list of engineers and the project, capital project managers and facility managers that we have. Next slide will include the additional staff in the operations who often act as project managers or facilitate the projects in the CIP. And then there are the stormwater project managers. And we just wanted to make sure that they get recognized tonight because they're the ones who hit the ground running, trying to get these projects done, get them through the procurement process and then actually through completion and construction. Next slide. This is just a reminder of kind of where we are. We're doing the public hearing budget work sessions. And then the next slide, you'll see that there are kind of public comments will close on May twelfth at five PM. You can provide your comments on both the operational budget and the components that we talked about tonight at City Hall, Gaithersburg MD.gov or by phone. We will propose to put the budget up for adoption through a resolution that is scheduled on Monday, June seventh. With that, that's, if there are additional questions, Beth or Tony and I would be happy to answer.
First off, I want to thank you guys for, for this presentation tonight, for all the work that you put in. And I want to recognize everybody that, whose names you, you put on the, on the, the last two slides. We appreciate all your work and, and really that goes for all of our divisions and departments who've presented over the past two days. Tanisha, I want to congratulate staff. This is kind of, this has been a new format for going through these work sessions. I, I feel like it's gone very well. I like the, the visual presentations. It's been sort of very infographic-y, which I think it's been successful in conveying a lot of information in, in a little bit of space. So kudos to, to everybody and to finance and for, for putting this together. I really do feel like we're on the right track and staff is, staff has really taken the guidance and the priorities set by the, the council in forming this budget. So, so thanks, thanks to all of you. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
I have a quick comment, Mayor. I can.
Go right ahead.
So you mentioned the infographics and just wanted to see if we could get more information in future additions about the breakdown of funding. I think Neil mentioned it about what's coming from the park's open space, what's coming from asset replacement and what funding sources coming from the capital budget, just so we can see. And then if you can tell us which one is coming from state funding from the bonds would be helpful to understand that. And I didn't see a lot of information about whether or not some of these projects are an increase or decrease from our last year's budget. I just wanted some additional insight on that. But definitely I think it's a more, less clunkier and more more straight to the point with the changes. So thank you.
Thank you, Loriann. I saw Neil's hand first and then Rob. Go ahead, Neil.
So looking through the, the budget book, I see money going into the OPEB trust fund, but I don't see where the OPEB trust fund is, where there's a status report on it. Is that something that's available as part of the budget process? I, I'd just be curious where the fund balance is and what expenses come out of it at this point.
Yeah, it's not part of the budget process, but we can get you that report, the, the trust, right? It's a trust. So all the dollars are there and they're being invested. And we get a report that shows the disbursements in the balance and the interest earnings. So we can share.
It's one of our biggest expense lines related to personnel. It's over three million dollars a year. So I'd be.
We certainly aren't spending three million dollars a year, right? So the disbursements aren't there yet, but we are being, we're preparing for future disbursements, but I can share that report.
I'm curious what the, what that looks like. Again, I'm just curious where we're going with fund balances on some of these areas. So I understand what the need is and I understand with the, that the guidance is to fully fund. But I'm just curious what, how we define fully funded. At this point, I think the last conversation we had about it was that we had enough money so that it was that the interest money alone was paying for all the benefits. And that seems like a very ultra-conservative and super-expensive thing to do when we're in a, you know, in a fiscal constraint mode. So I just, I'd like to see what, what it looks like at this point. When you have a chance.
I'd be interested too. So just share that with everybody, Tanisha, when you.
Yeah, I plan to do so. And I think, you know, we've talked about this a bit. It might be helpful to have just a, a brief work session topic at some point to, to, to talk more about OPEB. I don't think we're at the, I mean, if, if we're only counting our current disbursements, it's possible that interest can cover that. But we aren't, we aren't anywhere near fully funded.
We're underfunded.
No, there, there's, there's not a community in the US that, that can, can meet that milestone. I do think we're further ahead than some and we're in good shape. But, but I don't think we're overly aggressive, but certainly I think it's worth a, a, a conversation in sharing reports and maybe having an opportunity to have more Q and A versus just sharing the report with you. But we'll, we'll figure out when to get that scheduled. And in the meantime, we'll, I can share out our last quarterly report.
Thank you.
Can I ask for the group's indulgence to look at one page in the, in the book?
Go ahead, Neil.
Can we look at page five oh eight? Tech team.
Chris, are you able to pull that up? It's package page five oh eight, Neil?
Yes. All right. And I know there's a lot of numbers here. I'd just like to point out this, this is showing at the very bottom section that there's the asset replacement fund that I was referring to earlier has something like eleven million and eleven million odd dollars in it at the moment. The expenses that come out of that are running around two million dollars a year. And the amount of money that's going into it is around two million dollars a year. So it seems like at this point, asset replacement is self-sustaining and there's over ten million dollars that is sitting in these funds. So not, not wanting to beat the, the horse that's already dead tonight. But at some point, I'd like to, like some more insight as to where you see the out years going and if the expenses really justify the amount of money that's, that's put away that we can't use for other purposes. That's really the point I was trying to make earlier. I'm not trying to pull money out that we're going to need to spend. I just don't see any evidence that it's needed in this, you know, two-year, three-year snapshot. Okay.
And thanks, Neil. And I, I don't have an answer handy for you tonight, but I can tell you that when I saw that balance, I asked the same question. And after I spent a few hours with staff on how the current fund works, I was okay, but felt that we needed to, you know, add the asset replacement fund to both the CIP and the operating budget review that we're going to do in this next fiscal year. So you, you are asking the same questions that I ask. I don't want you to feel like you're an outsider raising these concerns. We certainly don't want to underfund, but we don't want to overfund either. And so we, we are also paying very close attention to that.
All right. I'll talk that up to great minds thinking alike and move to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, Mike's hand is up. Go ahead, Mike.
You know, I, I think this has all been very helpful. I, I agree. Loriann pointed out that, you know, this seems a lot more clear than, than previous budgets we've seen. I also want to, I think it's important, you know, we talk a lot about highway user revenue and how important that is to the city. We talk about tax duplication and how underfunded that is from the county that they're still holding money that we could be using. It would be good to see where those funds are being expended, how we're, how we're putting the, that, those dollars to use in any part of our, our budget. I don't know if that's possible to break it down like that, whether all of that just goes into the general fund and then we disperse it quarterly, both to operating and capital. But I think it'd be useful for the public to understand why those funds are so important to us, both from the state and from, from the county returning our funds to us and how they would be used. So I, I think it's always good to be able to explain to people where the money comes from and where it's going within the budget. So that's really the only thing I would add. I guess I would agree with Neil. It would be good to, in terms of OPEB, it would be good to have a presentation so that we really understood where that, you know, what that, number one, what's that, what is that for? For, just for the public, but also the importance of, of funding it appropriately. I think we're probably ahead of most cities in terms of funding that post-employment benefits and how important that is and, and obligation. But we could really get burned if it's, if it's not funded at the appropriate level. So and then, of course, this asset replacement, there, there seems to be some confusion here. So anyway, that's it. That's for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Rob.
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thank you, Tanisha, Dennis, and, and everybody that, that put this presentation on and provided us with seven hundred pages of reading enjoyment over the past few weeks. You know, Tony was known as the budget guy and I, I know, Tanisha, when we interviewed you, you talked about your love of budget. But you're, you're clearly a budget gal. And so this is a, a, a great presentation. And the, one of the things that I, I really liked about it was the fact that in each of the departments, a, a lot of the, the items are responsive to council priorities. And some of the stuff have been council priorities for a while that never got addressed. So I did appreciate that. And I want to either think you're being responsive to us or we all have a common sense of, of priorities. And, you know, hopefully it's the latter, but I'll take the former. But either way, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And I'm not seeing anything from anybody else. So I will note that our next regular meeting of the mayor and council is on Monday, May third, which is this next coming Monday, seven thirty PM, same time, same place. Gaithersburg Book Festival starts on Saturday. There are three programs on Saturday. They are going to be awesome. Be a hero to all your friends and send them the links to those programs and they will adore you forevermore. And with that, until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.